Showtime.
All right, what's that?
Showtime.
Yes? Good morning. I want to thank everybody for coming here this morning. My fellow board members and we have with us Wendy Hatch, our town collector, treasurer, finance director, and our town manager, Mr. Scott Crabtree, Matt Abrams from the Upson Group. We're going to hear a presentation today regarding the sewer rate and take a vote at the end of the presentation. And to get us started, Mr. Crabtree.
Thank you, Adam Chairman and board members. So, this is what we do annually. You guys have been here for, you know, some years now, so I think most of you are familiar with this. One of the things that we do with the water and sewer, as they're separate enterprise accounts, is that we have long-term planning. So, there's five-year capital improvement that are in the worksheets that you have that helps us plan and outline expectations of what the debt service would be and preventive maintenance and infrastructure improvements that we're going to be making over the next five years. They're not set in stone, but it's obviously a planning we work towards doing that. That way, we're able to project out. Sewer, a little different than water, is that I think you guys, the Board of Selectmen over the years, have really did a good job financially of trying to make the rates generate enough revenue that will pay for operations and debt service, et cetera, within the budget. The goal is for both these accounts, and I don't think people understood it for a long time, but I think over the years, we've been much more informed and educated, is we want to have a rate that generates enough revenue that pays for the cost of running the enterprise account. In past years and decades, a lot of times, they'd use retained earnings to, you know, to try to subsidize the rates going up. And what that does, using those one-time monies, is it just compounds the rate that needs to be increased to be able to generate enough revenue to pay for the operating costs. So, that's not a great practice, and I think we've been in good shape dealing with that. A few years back, we did the, we had that money that was put aside. The DOR allowed us to put that into our retained earnings from INI fees. We continue to charge INI fees that help supplement the debt service for some of the capital. That's a huge thing for the rate payers. And I think the one thing that we should definitely note, and I like to talk dollars and as everybody else does, because percentages sound different. But Wendy, as we've been talking about over the years, we're in the process now and we're working over the next 18 months to do water meter replacement. Those water meters will be charged equally from, to water and sewer. They're supposed 17 years old. Useful life are about 10 years, so we're far behind. So, when those come online, the technology will be, you know, great. We use the water meter to get the sewer rate, the sewer bill. So, I think that will help a lot. I think you've seen new stories in different communities when they change the meters. You can expect the bills to be more accurate, which will be more expensive. As meters get over 10 years old, they actually run slower, so you don't get as accurate reading because they get gummed up in the gears and the wheels. But I think that the, one of the things that you guys, as leaders, Finance Committee and the town meeting, for what we've put together is that water meter replacement program is being paid for through ARPA money. So, it's about a $6 or $7 million project, and that is a huge savings so that the rate payers don't have to endure, that's monies that went through the pandemic or recovery act. So, those things are, I think, really important for the community, even they're getting an increase. If we had the pay, which we do, water and the water meter replacements, that would have hit the both accounts and would have hit the rate payers pretty significantly. And we talked about that, and now I think that's a relief. So, I think people should take that into consideration, understanding rates go up, it's like everything else, your phone bill, your electricity bill, here you go, saving here, the cost of operations. Just to give a distinction between water and sewer, water's a little more consistent with MWRA and what we can expect, as we've talked about over the years and we'll talk about a little bit here in the presentation, is that with Lynn Water and Sewer, they're doing their own capital. That obviously is something we're trying to plan for, we were talking about. And with Lynn Water and Sewer, we've had occasions in years where they've sent us a bill after, after the fact of what we're budgeted that are unexpected, whereas MWRA with water has been more consistent and more reliable as far as what the bill is. So, our billing for what we pay for through Lynn Water and Sewer increases each year just for that. And that doesn't count labor and what we're doing on the send and debt service and operations. So, I'll turn it over to Matt Abrams.
Thank you. Good morning. We're going to Matt Abrams, Abrams True Water and Bad.
Mike.
Here to talk about sewer rates and the latest financial analysis that we've done for the sewer enterprise fund. So, as we do every year, we're, I work closely with the town, mainly with Wendy, to get comfortable with what we think the projected revenues and expenses are for sewer over the next five years. So, a five-year window in this case, it's FY '25, FY '29. And as you're aware, you are to discuss what's the rates for FY '25 only. However, we like to present to you what we think projected will be over the next five years, so you can be informed about that when you make your decision. Two things that stand out to me about the sewer fund, and we talk about these things every year, but just wanted to draw your attention to them again. Lynn Water and Sewer Assessment, as Mr. Crabtree talked about a moment ago. That is something that we do focus on heavily every year, and there are additional large projected expenses related to that in our financial book, and we'll talk about that. Essentially, they are planning a large capital group. I think the debt for that is going to hit in the very near future. On top of that, they're projecting an additional operating increase above and beyond what they usually have. So, that is definitely something that we need to talk about today, and I want, just want to make sure that you're comfortable with what we think's going to happen there. And then the second piece is the capital plan. It's always included in our analysis, however, just be aware that there's a little bit more on there this year than there was in past years. We spent some good time recently making sure that we were comfortable with what we thought the town will be spending over the next few years related to capital, and we'll get into that a little bit more. Okay. We always start with review, looking back, and that's what the first slide is here for you, if you look back nine years. And we've been working with the town now for nine, this is our ninth consecutive year. So, the first year that we worked with the town was for the FY '17 year that you see there, 7.5%. So, we do this analysis every year. We recommend certain rates, and this board makes a decision on what, what you feel is best. And you can see, when you look at the graphs down below, which show recent financial results, generally, your decisions have really helped the enterprise fund over the last few years. The enterprise fund has, the revenues have caught up with expenses. Expenses were pretty, pretty well above revenues in the early years that we worked together.
And I think just to talk about that, to hit on that, is that there was a lot of, obviously, the INI, the ACO by the DEP and Attorney General's Office, we were going a ton of capital, but for those decade or whatever more, we just, we weren't going up in rates. So, the rates were never paying for, you know, we were generally...
Yeah. So, the two graphs here, just to quickly explain what they represent. The one on the left is recent financial results comparing revenues to expenses. These are past years, except for the rightmost number, which is our projection for the current fiscal year, FY '24. And you can see that revenues actually trail below expenses for a while, and then it flipped in the pretty recent past, where revenues have been well above expenses. And you can see the same when you look at retained earnings graph. You can see that kind of building as we move forward. Once revenues exceed expenses, you add to your retained earnings, so that makes sense. The blue, the blue line on the retained earnings graph is the, is the target that we tend to focus on with your town, which is 10%. That's 10% of fund expenses in that year. And you can see that retained earnings certification, as well as the projection that we have for this fiscal year, FY '24, has now gone way above that line. So, that's, that's nice. The sewer fund is healthy when you just focus on reserves, and that's a really good thing, especially when we consider the expenses that we think are coming. It's nice to have those retained earnings available on each of you.
And again, these are the, as we talk about each year, water and sewer enterprise accounts are the most difficult and challenging to budget for. They're small accounts, and the water usage dictates. So, if you have a wet, it rains all summer, people use less water, and we don't get the projections of what we're projecting out for revenues. And that creates, you know, if it's a dry summer and we get more revenues, you have a different thing where there's more revenue coming in than projected. So, it's a very challenging budget, different than managing an operating budget, and something that Wendy and myself, especially Wendy, you know, worries about on a regular basis.
Next slide is, the next two slides, I believe, are focusing on the current fiscal year, which is FY '24. And as you know, we're almost done with FY '24. We don't yet know where it's going to end up, but we're at least able to get somewhat comfortable with projecting where it's going to end up. And that's what these two slides represent. So, just some quick hit highlights for you. Our projections for user charges we have is going up 8.4% over last year's. And we dug a little bit on why, because we are coming off of a wet season, so it surprised us a little bit that maybe revenues were up. We don't think it's related to weather. We think it was more related to the timing of last year's. So, some of the bills that were billed at the end of last year may have come up, come over into this fiscal year, and that helps the bottom line for FY '24.
So, you're booking, you're booking the income when it comes in on cash basis?
Yeah.
You don't book anything?
No accrues.
No, no accrues for that?
No. It's municipal finances.
So, it's sort of like, I think we're like a modified cash, I mean, the cash system.
And you just monitor offline, there to see what we have?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What, what needs to be reserved?
And then when they do the audit?
Audit, you have to true it out.
They transfer everything over.
You have to true it out for audit purposes.
International, you can read it, yeah, it's interesting.
Yeah.
It's almost like a sort of a fund system, you know, where it's, they allocate these things.
Huh. Yeah, that's weird.
That's a lot of the Finance Committee.
It's archaic.
Yes.
Do we draw the financials with crayons and stuff too?
It's municipal finance.
It's not how you run a, run a business, I could tell you that much. If you run a business on cash basis, you're in trouble.
Yeah.
On the expense side, expenses were up a good amount over prior year, $953,000. That's projected, so that's if the town fully spends the budget, which may not happen. That's 19.7% higher than what the actuals were for FY '23. Going into the fiscal year, based on what we had projected at that point, we didn't think the retained earnings needed to be used, and it ended up, that proved out as expected, meaning that we didn't, we don't need to rely on retained earnings, but projections are showing that surplus for the fiscal year is about $500,000.
Wendy, if you could do me a favor offline, look at, look at what we had in receivables at the end of last year and the end of this year to see, that's the only way you're going to test if it's the collections, and just look at the buckets that they're in and what was collected, like from the Oven ID or whatever. Because it just doesn't, conceptually, it doesn't make sense. We had a super wet summer. Summer last year was terrible.
Yeah, correct.
And for revenue to be up, it just, it just doesn't, doesn't seem right. So, if it's timing of collections, then we can look at what receivables would have been at the end of June '24 versus June '23. We could have looked at the receivables and the collection on those receivables to see. And, you know, it just seems like a big number for...
Well, it's also the timing of when the second bill is issued.
Yeah.
It's, generally speaking, in the last couple of years, it's been issued in late April, early May. So, you don't have a lot of time for those collections in the fiscal year. Revenue's recorded when it, when we receive it. So, then that carries over into the next fiscal year.
Right, but that's been a couple of years now, so that wouldn't really have a overall impact. If it was more, if it was the first year that we did that timing of the bill, then you would expect it to have an impact on the current year and not the prior.
Well, take into consideration too that we had three bills go out in one year because of a delay of having anyone in the position as the billing manager. So, for two years, those bills were, were delayed, so...
Yeah, I think we've talked about it.
Yeah.
Ideally, if you're going to have a water and sewer commission, right, if anybody wants to take that on, that's, you know, a separate entity, as well as changing the cycle of billing so that we're billing quarterly. Some municipalities that have high bills, billing monthly because it's easy, collectibles are a lot easier.
Yeah.
We do it twice a year, and the timing of the second bill...
Oh, and people freak out, you know, as soon as the bills come in. And it seemed like the bills were close this, in one year?
Yeah.
And they were, they were close together.
February and then another one in May.
Yeah, and they were like, you know, people like, but, you know, realistically, in your mind, you should know that you have a annual expense for water and...
A lot of people roll them over and then the real estate, mortgage companies pay it, you know, and they put it on themselves.
Add it to your escrow payment.
Correct.
Sorry about that, Matt.
No, no, that's, that's a good question.
Plus, the tiered system, obviously, you know, is sort of unique to any other community. Eight, eight different tiers, and that's something that probably we should look at at some point as well.
Okay, so another way that we look at the current fiscal year to try and understand what's happened and what we thought was going to happen, that's the best slide I've ever done. So, that middle column were our projections at this time last year. Based on the 3% increase that was approved by this board, we thought that there would be a small surplus in sewer fund of about $102,000, ended up being a little bit higher than that, mainly because of that revenue piece that we were just talking about. Expenses ended up being similar, slightly less than what it was this year. So, we were anticipating retained earnings being about 45%, and now we're projecting it being about 56% at the end of fiscal year, assuming that surplus comes in. And again, that's a very nice number. Keep in mind that our target, as shown on this slide, is 10%, 15%. We, we focus on 10% in our analysis. That's the target. We want to make sure the retained earnings is somewhere in that area. If it's above 3%, that means the fund is very low.
And just to add to that, you know, when you talk about percentages, 10% of a small budget, $6 million, you know, dollars, or change, it's not a ton of money.
Yeah.
And I think that's why, you know, it's, it's not like you're looking at 10% of $110,000. So, it's a big difference.
And reiterate that it was the INI money?
Correct.
That built most of this up. It was about $2 million.
Correct.
A couple of years ago, so...
We was lucky that, where that worked out. Mike and I were on the board back then and challenged it in SJC, and were able to retain those monies as the fees.
And Mark?
Yep.
State?
Yep.
Great study objectives. These are things we tend to focus on every year. We talked about retained earnings balance, targets, a lot of the shortfalls, something that Mr. Crabtree talked about already, just to make sure that the revenues are covering our expenses. And also, we want to make sure that we're looking at the capital piece, what's on the plan, and making sure that we are projecting expenses related to that. And these are focuses every year, but just for reiterating now, these are things that we're thinking about as we put our projections together. Capital plan is a slide that you tend to see every year when we do this, this review, but it gets updated with the latest information available. And as I mentioned already, there was significant time spent getting, getting comfortable with what the true natural plan should be on sewer side. This has been updated. So, this is more robust, for lack of a better word, than it was at the time last year. So, some things to focus on here, we have multiple subsystem design and construction. We have those projects on here. I think we might have had one last year. I didn't review that prior to this meeting, but there were some changes associated with that. I think there was also some changes associated with lift station in terms of additional projects or additional spending related to that. And there are some vehicles on here, and we also added at the very bottom, other future improvements, which isn't tied necessarily to a particular project, but just that there's funds in there because we think that there will be projects that need to be, to be worked on in those years. So, that is a little bit of a change from prior year, from the prior year as well. As Mr. Crabtree mentioned, the meter replacement program, which shows at the bottom here, is the plan is still to fund that, ARPA funding, that has not changed. And that was what we presented at this time last year, and just to remind you that the fund is not being, the fund will not be funding that ARPA funds.
Yeah, and I think that over the last few years, and that's why I retain earnings on, which is good, is that we've been planning for what this capital that's going to happen and their operating costs, that Lynn Water and Sewer, that's still projecting, and this meter replacement, which, you know, usually not, or that's, you know, a huge relief for the rate payers.
Have we already bought any excavators in the denture?
No, we won't purchase those, I think, until this gets approved. So, a lot of this stuff is, yeah, we're going to be purchasing in any day, but we have a list.
Excuse me, sorry. But there's, the debt associated with those purchases is factored into your FY '25 budget?
Correct.
Yeah, be aware of that. And then the point down at the bottom, this is really the difference between last year and this year, that I could put in dollars for you really easily. We were projecting that debt related to the capital plan last year, new debt, $2.1 million total over the five-year period that we're looking at. Now, it's up to $4.1 million total, so that's about double what we were projecting in last year's analysis.
And again, it's a small budget, but again, we're, as you know, the board has been supportive of this, and the town itself, and my administration is doing infrastructure and capital planning, we think is one of the most important, the cornerstone of financial health. Because we're investing in our community, we're putting the money into buildings, our water and sewer, all these things, to prevent emergencies and, you know, disruption in services to the residents.
Rate setting drivers. This slide, you've seen before, I believe, we focus on different buckets of expenses and what we think's happening with those. This is the five-year look that we look at in our analysis, FY '25, back home, it's based on your budget. So, those are, those are real dollars in your budget, and anything to the right of that are projections that we've put together going outward from there. Things to focus on here are the two big ones we've already talked about, Lynn Water and Sewer, look at that jump in FY '26, and the debt line, also a big jump in FY '26. So, let's talk just real quickly about Lynn Water and Sewer. What we do is we work with, I don't know what his position is there, Ryan Lynn Water and Sewer, he's a financial guy there. Every year, you get comfortable with what we think the projected assessment will be. As Mr. Crabtree mentioned, it's very difficult to project what we think will happen, just because it's heavily based on Saugus' flow share, which fluctuates every year. It's not, definitely not stable. So, we usually assume a pretty conservative estimate there, and then we get comfortable with the capital piece. So, the operating piece, which is based on your flow share, usually goes up anywhere from 3% to 5% annually. Brian has said that it's projected about 15% in FY '26. So, that is a pretty big change on the operating side. And then in addition to that, the capital piece, which I mentioned earlier, they're, they're planning a large capital improvement right around, to start very soon, and the debt related to that should come on in FY '26 and a bigger assessment in FY '26. So, there's, it's kind of a perfect storm, so to speak, that there's an operating increase likely to happen in '26 and that capital increase to happen in '26.
And just to add to that, they would, that those, whatever the increases are, those are proportionally sent out to the communities that are part of the water and sewer. So, what's the percentage on the capital increase? On theirs?
Yeah, for the operational and operational, can you break down the percentage of each?
What, what we think it's going to go in, what do you think?
For operational and on capital?
So, you're asking what we think it'll go up for Lynn Water and Sewer, yeah?
Yeah, for each.
What's our, what's our proportion of the, you know, the center price?
No, not on the top of my head. We're definitely not the lowest. I'd say Lynn's highest, and then probably Saugus.
Yeah, Swam.
Swam's got, uh-huh.
So, there's four communities out of Lynn Water and Sewer?
Yes.
Four?
Yeah.
Right, because my, 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 so... So, the thing, the other part of it to understand too is when we do the infrastructure, the INI, we're taking out the inflow infiltration into our system that is processed. The more we take out, the less we pay, right? There's less that's being processed over through Lynn Water and Sewer, and it obviously helps capacity wise as well, and you're improving the longevity, long-term for the infrastructure. So, that's a big deal that's taking, you know, continuing to do the INI projects, substations, sorry.
So, who was the fourth community? You said Lynn, Saugus, Swam, Scott? Nah, nah, thank you.
We're really lucky to be part of that system. Because if you have MWRA sewer, and I made this joke, I said it to the Finance Committee as well, we've had people in the past years that come from Somerville, and they think there's something wrong with the bill, that it wasn't calculated right, because it goes 10 times there.
Yeah.
So, to answer the questions, it's fun enough to answer, you're looking for it, I'll, I'll tell you it anyway, and we can talk about it. So, 15% on the operating side, but the capital side's going up way more, it's over 200% increase. And that's the reason why, is because the debt portion that you pay today is $246,000, and we have it going up over to over $800,000. So, that's an increase of, for, no, $550,000 of what you pay today in capital, so that's why it's over 200% increase.
And I think, I think, Matt, they're, they're looking to utilize the state revolving fund, so it's a low-interest loan like we use for many of our capital projects on the sewer infrastructure, and they're on the intended use plan as we are, as we said at the last town meeting, and the number is $68 million. And I don't think that that's the total project. I think that's only phase one of the project. So, when the new company came in two years ago to take over the operations of Lynn Water and Sewer under the commission, they were tasked with going through the entire facility and outlining...
From the capital plan.
Outlining what, outlining what the capital needs were going to be of that station. And so, that, that's where they're at at this point.
Their, their company, they had, was from New Jersey, you know?
I don't know that happened.
And look, we did the tour of the sewer plant years ago.
So, excuse me, the other piece, just to discuss real quick, is the debt piece that, that stands out to me on this slide. That second bullet point down below shows the increase in what we projected for debt, the $130,000, that's an increase over what's on the books today. I think that actually should be FY '25, so that goes FY '24, that's what I hope. Then we have the net debt going up an additional, that $780 is not total, that's an additional above and beyond the $130 in FY '26, and then we have it going up an additional $289 in FY '29. So, if we add those three numbers together, we are, that's quick, Matt, 1.2-ish million, something like that. So, it ramps up pretty quick. All right, so here's, here's that slide in terms of overall, my little numbers for you. Where are we now, looking forward five years into the future? This slide represents our do-nothing or baseline scenario, which basically means we've included all of your expenses, where we think they're going to be over the next five years, and your revenues as of today. It does not include any rate changes. And that's not reality, but we just wanted to show that to you so you can see how far your current retained earnings can take you without additional rate action. And this is saying that it can take you through FY '26, but not now.
And Mike, the other part is that we're, obviously, we've been balancing every year, trying to plan for us to continue with our capital debt service, which includes debt service, our capital plan, but trying to balance how the impact is going to be with Lynn Water and Sewer's capital, and when it's going to head timing wise. You know, we don't want to keep delaying our stuff, and that's why in the next couple of years, the debt service goes up quite a bit.
Yeah, and just some other things, just to quickly point out on this slide, that I always feel is important, the last certified retained earnings was $2.76 million, and based on where we think '24 is going to end up, we had it going over $3 million. But then, as you can see, it quickly depletes, and one of the big reasons why, we just talked about these expenses. So, let me draw your attention to the total expenditures line and that FY '26 number, $7.628 million. Look at that compared to the FY '25 number, $6.2 million. So, that's the impact of the Lynn Water and Sewer assessment projected, projection that we just talked about, as well as the additional debt. We have your budget going up about $1.4 million just in that one year. Obviously, that's very difficult. You can't just raise rates to cover that, so...
The one thing is really super conservative is the top-line revenue that you started with, because you're using more of what we projected for FY '24 as a starting point instead of the actual, we think we're going to come in with FY '24. FY '24 is going to come in around $6.3 million.
Yes.
And I know we said, oh, we might have collected some receivables, but if you use $6.3 million, we're almost more like break even on that.
Yeah, that's a good point. We are very conservative of our revenue projections, and that's reflected here. Yes, thank you very much. Yes, thank you very much. Okay, so now here, here are the rate options. We have three for your consideration today. This slide should look familiar. We've used this slide in the past, it's updated with the latest recent numbers. Option one, six percent increase for the next fiscal year of FY twenty-five. And you can see what we think the rates would need to be in the subsequent years if that were to happen. So we have the rates going up seven percent annually, starting in FY twenty-six, if this board were to approve a six percent increase for FY twenty-five. And again, this board is just interested this time in approving FY twenty-five rate. However, we like to show you that five-year look. So you can see that with the graph that's updated in this case, that with this rate plan, we think that your, your retain earnings will remain around the target by the end of the five-year look. And another way to look at this is because of those additional expenses in twenty-six and the overall increase in the budget going forward, you, you are relying on retain earnings in order to help because raising that additional one point four is, it just raises, it's a difficult thing to do. So it's nice that you have those retain earnings to give you help.
So which, you know, within the next year or two, we would analyze where we're at and what we're going to use for retained earnings to deal with some of the capital debt service that we take online. Without that, we would have to raise rates, rates higher to keep pace with. But again, that option six, the option one that's six percent, the average residential user, we like to talk dollars because it makes more sense. I think for people, that would be twelve dollars twice a year. So a six percent increase equals twenty-four dollars annual on the sewer side for the average residential user.
Just, just looking at the scenarios quickly, I mean, it's a two-dollar difference at a five percent rate increase. Two dollars less, so four dollars a year on the average residential user. You know, I, what I'm, you know, I mentioned this before. I just think that because this fund has performed well, I think it's because we've made some tough decisions over the years. And it's never popular to raise rates and raise costs to the residents because, you know, we know that everybody's struggling in the economy that we're in and the administration that's in place with the inflation and everything that's going on. But that being said, we're also seeing the benefits of not having to worry about emergency contracts, fixing as many water and sewer breaks and, I mean, years passed. It seemed like, it seemed like there was a water and sewer break like twice a week, three times a week, especially in the winter and they're digging up roads. So I do think that there's a kind of a balance there.
It was a lot worse years ago when they were dumping raw sewage in the Saugus River.
Yeah, and, and so now it's like people are going to get a little complacent because we're running smoother.
Yeah.
And, but they don't realize what it's taken to get to that point. Rebuilding these sewer stations is millions of dollars. I mean, it's not...
We now have, and I love to say this all the time because it's not the things that people understand, but for me, that's the part that lets you sleep at night. At the, down at the main pumping station and Lincoln Ave, all three pumps and all three drivers with a bypass, when they have to do work on it, is in place now. That had never been the case. Never had three pumps and drivers working at one time. And that's why they were going to dump it into the Saugus River, another contributor as well as the... So those things there, that was four point three million dollars a few years ago. If we were to do that now, it would probably be six point eight million dollars. And so part of it is, is preventive maintenance and doing the cap. So there's a balance there. But it does, when you, people think it runs smoothly, everybody thinks of, oh, we don't, we can cut here, cut there. You guys have done a great job at trying to at least maintain and take the cost on that kind of coincide with the cost of living increases.
I personally, because I know we do have a timed thing, Matt. I know you went through the, these analysis, these numbers are here. It's basically a two-dollar difference twice a year if you go from six to five.
Right, the five percent...
And then it's two dollars more if you go from six to seven.
Right, so to be clear, the five percent option is ten dollars twice a year.
Twice a year, so it's twenty dollars.
Correct, to the average resident.
And my gut tells me I'd like to see if we could go in a little bit lower this year only because I have confidence that the rates, the rates are there. I have confidence that as we line up the new, we're not projecting when the new meters are in place and we're getting more charges for the, for the actual usage. That's not predictable.
Correct.
So that's going to have, it's not going to have a negative impact on revenue. It's going to have a positive impact on revenue.
Negative to the residents.
Make, right, right, that's what I'm saying. So I'd rather try to, I'd rather try to keep it on the lower side. You know, instead of going six, maybe consider five and then see how it plays out. I like to see, next year at this meeting, we'll see where we come in budget to actual. We did have a four hundred thousand dollar surplus, so it's almost like taking that unplanned surplus and applying it to the reduction in the planned rate for this year. Instead of going six, go five. Take that projected surplus and use that to offset the one percent that we wouldn't, we wouldn't go six. I know six is kind of the recommendation, six or seven, but I feel like water is...
I think we need to charge them because we wouldn't recommend anything lower than five.
Yeah, well, I, well, I think the reason why is because like water's in a worse disposition than sewer. So they need to go higher if they're going to predict and plan. But we've done a good job and we've made tough decisions with higher rates over the years. So if we can scale it back a little bit this year, I think...
So water, just to be clear, if you, I don't have the sheets here, but if water, they took that zero in twenty twenty-one and then a one and a half the year after. If they just stayed with like a three, two or three, those two years, they wouldn't be in the situation they're in.
That's what I'm saying.
People don't understand, you're saving a couple of dollars.
I mean, you've got to think about just inevitably, right? If we're not building as many houses, right? And the revenue's kind of flat year over year without a rate increase, then you have to think about it. You've still got to give raises to people. You still have cost of living increases. You still have inflational increases, which everybody knows about. So you can't expect revenues are going to cover expenses if you keep things flat. It's just, it's, conceptually, it just doesn't work. Never mind the cost of borrowing is so much more expensive today than it was, you know, three, four years ago. But that might be corrected in November, but I digress. So anyway.
I'm going to, oh, you want to go first?
Well, I was just going to say, so no matter what we, what increase we vote here, we're going to end up at the same percentage over ten percent retain earnings.
Yeah, because the other years have blended out to get us there.
Yeah, the retain earnings, just to be clear, is a way of padding in the sense of having those monies for the one-time debt service that we're going to get in assessments that we're going to get with the Lin Water, Sewer, their own infrastructure as well as ours, the capital that we're doing. And it gives us some ideas, like Jeff's talking about, that next year, we'll have a better idea. And the next two years is going to be critical of us analyzing where we are.
That's why I don't want to go too high in the rates because there's still a lot of...
I know.
You don't want to go too low either. So it's sort of like you get the right balance.
I think five has to be the baseline only because the cost of living. I mean, if you're giving people raises and the cost of benefits, pension costs for employees, I mean, you can't, you can't, what, I wish I could run my house only going up five percent a year. You know, but it's, it's impossible with what utility costs and...
Again, five percent is twice a year, ten dollars.
It's twenty dollars a year to the average residential user. Probably four hundred to me, but twenty, I'm a watering fool, I admit it, so. But I don't vote for me. I, I vote based on what the average user is. I know my bill is no way near that. I hope it was.
I think with our strong retained earnings and we do see that our revenue is conservative in these estimates. And also considering the economy is difficult for a lot of people, I would rather go with the lower percentage so it would have a less impact on our residents. I do understand Lin Water and Sewer assessment that's going to be going up significantly, but I think we're going to know more next year. And I think, but the retain earnings, as strong as they are right now, a lower percentage makes the most of all the sense.
And do we have a timeline on the new, I think I asked this earlier in another meeting. Do we have a timeline on when the new water meters?
Probably in the next eighteen months.
Yeah, so I think that's going to help us a lot too. Because once those are installed, now we'll have a baseline also to kind of recalibrate revenues. Right now, we don't know, we don't know. We only know what we have based on the existing meters. Yeah, well, you put in the new meters, you generate more revenue. You might not need as many rate increases or as high a rate increase. So I'd rather go with, I agree. I say we go with the lowest, the five percent. Use that as our baseline. Recalibrate next year, we'll see how things plan out. Eighteen months if we're online, that brings us to the following year. Somebody else will be in the seat and I won't have to worry about it. So it's perfect.
So you're saying...
Oh, you're kicking the can down the road. Should be within, should be within eighteen months, they should be installed. So to understand the project, and we've talked about this in the past, it's a pretty, you know, bandwidth wise for us, it's a ton of work because you're bringing in completely new software system. We have someone we've hired, we're trying to hire another person that's been recommended through, through our vendor, you know, our consultants. But you're talking about gateways that are wireless. You're talking about bringing onto a whole new system where you, you as a resident can opt into a system where if your bill spikes for that day or two, it could notify you that there's a problem. So if you're in Florida for three months a year, it's not going to be this where you build, you know, you don't know what happened.
If you've got a toilet, right.
Toilet leaking, your bills are eight thousand, you know, it's four thousand dollars and you come home and say, geez, there's water, there's a leakage. And then, you know, everybody knows what happens every week. Says, I didn't have a leak, there was no leak here. And it's like the meter read what it read. So I think that's, 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 the system's going to be a whole though.
A lot less, a lot less of a challenge for residential mistakes or residential issues.
Right, but we'd be, we're setting up gateways that all, that read all the meters right from your house without anybody having to go into them, that comes directly into the whole...
I have, I have one question on that, on the opt-in. Can you make it opt-out instead of opt-in? That's something to look into, like in a 401K. We find that if you have it opt-in, you have less participation. But if you have it opt-out, you're in unless you opt out of it. I think if we could do an opt-out, make everybody in it.
Yeah, I'm not sure how they, I mean, I...
I'm just saying, I think that's...
You might have to manually go in.
There'll be seniors and people that said, oh, I didn't know, I had to...
But I think you manually have to go in and put what, how it'll be notified on the phone or maybe it's an app, so we'll educate.
It is.
Yeah, we would have to have four...
So we'll educate everybody as much as we can. But it'll be a big benefit.
I think it's a huge benefit.
Yeah.
Well, for us, the maintenance wise...
We'll have less people coming to the meetings telling us that their meter was broken.
So I just have a question. I don't, all right, so other than just the, excuse me, the bills that come in for water and sewer rights to the resident businesses, when the developments come in, like Essex Landing or Hilltop, is there like a standard procedure the town goes through to hit that, that they're going to be using the sewer system and the water so much more when they develop these developments?
Yeah.
Is there a...
So just, I think what you're asking is that, so the DPW and engineering and planning board, for the most part, generally on large projects or larger, certain sized projects, they require a flow test, right? So in other words, they create, they require an analysis of how much water is going to be used and how much sewage is going to be used. Then they also do an analysis of the infrastructure to see if it has the capacity, if it's aged, if it needs repair. And then those things are put on as requirements by the DPW or engineering and planning board onto those developments. And on top of that, we charge an INI fee, a hookup fee and all that stuff comes into the account as revenue, into the enterprise accounts and is used to sort of offset expenses and debt services.
So that's a one-time deal though? It's just when they're developing or when they finish developing, whatever, do they...
Correct.
The funding there's from? Okay, so just, all right, thank you.
Are there any other questions? There's no other questions from board members?
I'll make a motion.
Want to make a motion?
Sure. Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that based on the presentation by the Abraham's group, we recommend a five percent rate increase on the sewer charges for fiscal year twenty-five as presented, based on our strong retained earnings. You can hold at the, at the lowest of the options provided.
Let's second by the chair is the affirmative discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of select machinations, motion please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? Okay, motion attached is five to zero.
So, Madam Chair, just to add to that, so I think the positive thing here, or one of them, is that we're not using any retained earnings for the rate. So that's really positive for us. Water, they're using some retained earnings. But I think that that's positive. I just want to thank everyone, appreciate you making yourselves available. As you know, this is a tough time, budget-wise time, and it's crucial to getting the budget timing for water and sewer rates and moving forward with the sewer budget. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome. I also want to thank board members and everyone for coming to such an early meeting and SUTV for recording our meeting so early this morning.
And Matt made it a conversation.
And Matt, yeah, you went over and above to maybe a clock meeting.
Eight forty-four, buddy. That's why I cut off, that's why I cut off scenario three.
Thank you for reviewing this information with us ahead of time. So we had our questions, many of them already answered, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
With that said, would somebody please make a motion for adjourned?
So... Thank you, everyone.
Second by the chair, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Fifty-six, five to zero. Hope everybody has a great day.
Thanks, everyone.